Good evening. Welcome to beautiful North Las Vegas on a wonderful evening. We welcome you to our council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance and the main doors you came in and on the podium rail to my left. Please give the card to the city clerk. She sits right here in front of me. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Great. Thank you. Tonight, we have an opportunity to have the invocation given by Pastor Dean Sainer from Discovery Church. Following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Councilman Scott Black. Please rise.
Thank you for the privilege and let's pray. Lord, we thank you tonight for your wisdom and blessing on our city. We thank you for our leaders and every employee in this city. We just pray that you would be with our law enforcement officials as they seek to keep our city safe. And, Lord, as decisions are made this evening regarding a variety of events and things that are to come, that you would continue to be with every committee, every person that has influence, and that this city would continue to be able to grow and to glorify you. And we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Moving on to presentations tonight, we have, every month, one of the city council people get to choose, it's assigned to the city councilperson, a business in their area of their ward, and they bring that business forward and they say great things about it. Tonight, we have the opportunity to have Mike Louie here with Skyview YMCA. Councilman Mayor Protem Churchill will do that. And following that, we are going to have Alex Perez. Do we want to wait till the end of the meeting to do Alex? He'll leave probably after this. Maybe we should hold...
It depends if he has cake.
Okay, all right. Alex, we're gonna, Churchill says, if you've got cake, we're gonna have you next. So what we'll do is we're going to present a thanks to Alex Perez, our recently retired police chief. Council, let's go down for these presentations.
You know, where do you put the short guy between? Steps going up this way. As the mayor said, each of us councilpeople have a business of the month that we'd like to recognize. I like to recognize our businesses not only for their tenure in Ward Four, which because it's a growth area, there really isn't all that much tenure up there, but there are certain businesses that really serve the public. And when the generational facility was built and we went into that crunch of the economy, going straight down, our YMCA took over our facility, the Skyview, and they've been doing an amazing job. Their involvement with the community, with the children, with the families, with the seniors, I've had the opportunity to go up there and participate in bingo. And, you know, I watch it. I don't play it. My wife plays it. But, you know, they serve the public. There's over 5,000 families up there that really, really need that facility. And, you know, we have to grow that facility as well. And I could tell you this, just by knowing Ray and Mike over here, they're very proactive. They're very community supportive. They're not just there running a facility for somebody else. You know, in essence, this is theirs and they run it for our residents and for the people and the seniors, the way it should be run, as if we were running it ourselves. Personally, not that I'm a senior, but I really appreciate what you do because I hear all good things when I go up there from the people who participate up there. So it really gives me a lot of pleasure to present... You have five full-time employees and what, 60 part-time? Amazing. On behalf of the City of North Las Vegas, this certificate of recognition is presented today's day, June 6, 2018, to Skyview YMCA for your invaluable service to our community since 2011. We wish you continued success and extend our sincere gratitude for serving our community. Thank you so much.
But we just appreciate this honor and, more importantly, appreciate the partnership and the opportunity to serve kids and families up in North Las Vegas. And this is Raymond Frazier, our executive director up there. So come down and see us anytime. Busy right now with summer camp and the pool, so bring your kids on down and, you know, play bingo with Richard anytime you want.
You can take all my money.
Thank you. I really appreciate the support that we get from Mayor Protem, Mayor, coming out to a lot of the events that we do have. And one of the things that we are seeing right now is really increased traffic through the facility, both with membership and with all of our programs for the kids and for the seniors. So it's really a great time up at the Skyview Y if you can get by, see all the great things we're doing.
Well, again, when you look at a community, you look at not just the streets, not just the buildings that make up, you know, the community, but you look at the accrots, you know, the things that make quality of life. The YMCA in that part of town is definitely, it's a centerpiece. It's a, we're really proud to have it. And, you know, what would you bring, I think, to the residents? I know, because I live right around the corner from there and I've seen all the different programs that you have there. It's, you are way more than just the sum of the parts. And very differently, I can't think of a better person that the Mayor Protem could pick for Business of the Month.
Mike, I might be an expert. My mother worked for the wife for 20 years, when John Warren was there and Ritter and everybody. What a great family it was, what a great family event it is for families to go there. I was a YBA coach. I went to Disneyland as a chaperone. The YMCA and the Boys Club definitely made me the man I am today. So I appreciate what you're doing for future generations. It's not just for this weekend or this hot summer swimming. It's how you build people, you know? And there's a lot of tools at the YMCA that are able to do that. So congratulations, well-deserved, Richard. Good choice.
Thank you and congratulations. And I think your program has something for kids of all ages from zero to 99. Lots of great programming and I love the principles that the YMCA has built on. So you couldn't have picked a better choice, Mayor Protem. So congratulations. Appreciate what you do for the community.
Ditto.
I like it. Cut right to the chase. Thank you.
Can we please have our recently retired chief?
Actually, I was actually deeply honored that the mayor asked me to say something. You always have to ask yourself how far you've come. I think that Chief Pettis is probably one of the very shining examples, I think, of our community of how far a person who's definitely someone from our community has gone. Again, he grew up just literally a stone's throw away from here, you know? We have similar backgrounds. We went to the same school together, you know, over here at Jim Bridger. Well, I might have stayed a little guy, right? But we were little guys together over here at Jim Bridger. And if you were to see, compare the skinny little guys that we were there at Jim Bridger, to see him grow into the strapping professional police officer, leader of men and women of one of the largest police forces in the state of Nevada. And to see it, you know, it's a pretty good police force, and to see it transform into something new, to put it on a path to where, I don't, you know, with all respects to our brother officers, I think, in Metro and Henderson, as another one of our fantastic upper management guys said, he told me that in five to 10 years, we'll have unquestionably by far the best police force probably on the West Coast. And I think a lot of that has to do to the vision that this man brought to the police force. And I know that this thing is being recorded and I hope it's played for our recruits that we're bringing in. Again, Napoleon once said that every soldier had a, I think it's called the Field Marshal's Staff in his knapsack. Well, he brought it from, again, as a kid who might have at one point been running from the cops, I think, you know, we, well, I did too, you know? We, well, we'll get selected on these days, okay? To being, you know, a young recruit police officer, he had that, you know, he had those four stars there in his bag, I think, and he grew into it. Again, the police, the police chief here, he's a shining example. The last thing I want to say is, something really struck into me, I think a few years ago. The mayor once said that he liked the fact that we have people here, that he'd say that, you know, there's gonna be a little kid out there who's gonna see an example and he's gonna say, hey, I can grow up to be him. I can grow up to be her. I was talking to a few of our younger police officers here not that long ago. I said, hey, one of you might be the police chief here in a few years. Why not you? Well, in this case, he was Alex. I can go on and on. I see, he has his family here. Again, you know, he has a wonderful family. I am really, I'm kind of dismayed that we're losing him so quickly. He put his time in and he has a wonderful family that I say that we're releasing him to, you know, that he gets to be there in their lives, right? And he's a young man. He's got a lot more things, he's accomplished, I think, in his life. He's not done yet. I think we'll be hearing more things of this fantastic police chief. I want to go ahead and read this here right now because if not, I'm gonna start crying here and he'll have to like, you know, hey, Baron, come on, cool it, right? Presented this May 16, 2018, to Alejandro Pettis, Chief of Police, August 20, 1996 to May 24, 2018, "A recognition of your distinguished public service and dedication to the City of North Las Vegas from the mayor and the city council." Congratulations.
We'll take a picture. I just want to say, Alex, when I came here, there was a lot of distrust about whether the city would be even open for business another two weeks. And what we inherited here as an organization, we needed to bridge some relationship building, you know? And since you became the police chief, you brought the harmony back to the city, the police, the city, the residents, we're all one family. We're all one team. There isn't, these are my guys, it's our team, you know? And so I'm very excited about the leadership that you've shown, how it just clicked overnight that everybody was glad to have a new leader, to have a vision, a breath of fresh air that came in, and you made all that happen. I'm probably not supposed to have favorites, but you were probably one of the favorite, probably five people that made a big difference in our city at the most critical time. And so I appreciate you, understanding your skill set and understanding your leadership. Whatever you continue to do in the future, you're gonna be very successful at. But I will tell you, every great man is a great woman. And I have met your wife a few times and I know she's just terrific. And you're so blessed to have her. She's a treasure. And I would hope that you get a job and don't stay around and ruin her, you know? And that she'll send you off to work and then she'll continue to be the great lady she is at that house. But please don't just retire. Keep yourself active a little bit, but you'll always have a chance to come back here if it doesn't work out and we'll put you in a squad car, okay? Thank you.
Well, I'm not gonna add much to that because everything's really been said by the mayor and Councilmember Baron. I don't know about putting the chief back in the squad car, but I'd love to see him in a VIP's car. But, you know, right? I think it's a great idea, actually. Should make that part of your retirement. But I just want to say thank you personally for being a friend and of course, as being a resident here and a constituent, it's my privilege and pleasure to have worked alongside of you and just to have known you and still know you even after retirement. So thank you.
Alex, you are a ray of sunshine. You brighten up any room that you walk into. So thank you for your leadership. And when you're among a group of firsts, that's huge. And I know you brought change to our department, lots of diversity, and so I totally appreciate that, but we want to continue that legacy as we move forward. I wish you the best in your next chapter of your life, whatever you decide to do. And you know you can always come back here, like the mayor said. I wouldn't put you in a squad car either, but you can always come back. So you will be surely missed. Thank you so much for your leadership.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the service that the chief has given our city. And I'm intrigued by the concept of the thin blue line, the line that you and your folks provide that separates law and order from disorder. And I think it takes a very unique and special person to be in law enforcement. It's a unique and dynamic business. And then it takes an extra exceptional person to lead an organization like that. And we've been fortunate enough to have that exceptional individual. So thank you.
I'll try to be brief as you've been listening about all these great things about me and patiently doing so. I appreciate that. I thank you in all seriousness. This has been a total honor for me to have been given the opportunity, as Councilmember Baron pointed out, a local kid that basically grew up in this department, in this community and within this police department, and to have been given the opportunity, the trust to have been given me to lead it and head down the right road and be successful in so many ways, it was truly my honor to serve, to serve the mayor with his vision, this council, the majority of this council has changed a little bit, my fellow directors and the leadership that they provide here for this city, second to none. I am honored. I am honored to have served with you. I am honored to have led my, the men and women of this department. It's really the boots on the ground that make a difference in our community and they do it, day in, day out. So my hats off to you. My prayers are with you nightly for what you do on a daily basis, selfishly, selflessly, and with your mind, as I like to say, your mind and hearts in balance in the right place. And that's how we best serve our community. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for all. Mi comunidad habla hispana. Muchas gracias por atender esta ceremonia, pero más que todo por apoyar este departamento de policía y sus concejales y el alcalde de esta ciudad. Siguen adelante con nosotros. Juntos logramos mucho. Thank you all. God bless always.
We're gonna take a picture and then ask his family to come up and we'll take pictures and then we'll take about a five-minute break so the officers can all hug you, okay? And thank you very much personally.
Great. We'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you for being patient with us. Very seldom do you have people in your life that makes such a huge difference to a city and we felt that that was appropriate to let Alex know how important he has been to this city. Moving on to council items, Councilmember Baron.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate your indulgence. To begin with, this next Tuesday, right here in the council chambers, you know, we're gonna, every once in a while, we have these very unique opportunities. And so especially for the viewing audience at home, I'm inviting people to come by and see the Miss Summer presentation in the city council chamber this Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. There will be, there's actually a big international contest here and some of the top 30 contestants will actually be here in a little mini pageant, sort of, this Tuesday, June 12. So I'll be on hand, you know, to do my ceremonial duties. I hope people can stop on by. Also, speaking of beauty, we have, I'm so happy that here in the Stone Soup Art Gallery here, right outside, we're blessed that our friends at the Nevada Arts Council have brought to us through the Nevada Touring Initiative, a show. It's called Basin Arranged. So I invite everyone to please take a look and, of course, you know, enjoy the arts with us. I also, this morning, Mayor, I was at the Clark County School District. And of course, you know, we were planning on doing things to bring the city into a better partnership with our friends at the school district. It only makes sense since we're serving the same community. And so I want to applaud the Clark County School District. Of course, one of my bosses is here. But the school board went ahead and approved a measure that part of it will be in conjunction with the City of North Las Vegas, they'll be bringing to our community a brand-new JD Smith. Of course, the old JD Smith has been there since 1952, held together, as one of the trustees said, with baling wire and a little bit of spit, they're writing, and some tape. So, did you go to JD Smith, Mayor?
Jim Bridger.
You went to Jim Bridger? I went to Jim Bridger too, but a lot of other friends, they went to JD Smith. Anyhow, we should, we'll be having a brand-new JD Smith. So I wanted to thank our friends at the Clark County School District for that. And just one other thing, well, actually, two more things. If you haven't had a chance to see it, our friends at Maya Cinemas have had a full tilt-up for their building right across the street here at Kitty Corner. It's a thing of beauty so far. It's gonna be, I think, again, the cornerstone for a brand-new downtown of Las Vegas. If you get a chance, please go by and be as loud as I am. If you like, if you wait until after the city council meeting, I'll take you to the ninth floor. I'll let you see what it looks like from the ninth floor and take all the pictures and you can augur it the way I do, you know? Finally, I don't know how bad people realize this, but our city attorney, she just, I'm very proud of her. Of course, you know, I believe here at the City of North Las Vegas, we are municipal leaders and our very own Michaela is, I think she's one of the highest-ranking city officials of Filipino descent. And on June 10th, our friends from the Philippines will be celebrating their 120th independence anniversary, right? And so, hey, it's not for me, you know, I like to respect a lot of different cultures, not just Mexican and Hispanic thing with me. We have lots of friends in the Asian community and so I wanted to applaud our friends from the Philippine Islands. And again, I think they're gonna be having something at the Asian Cultural Center. But again, congratulations to the Philippines on their Independence Day.
Great report. Mayor Protem Churchill.
Just to add to what Councilmember Baron just said, we had the privilege of presenting... Just to add to what Councilmember Owen just said, we had the privilege of presenting them with a proclamation, you know, kind of, you know, thanking them for their participation in our community, and of course, our recognition of, you know, their Independence Day here as well. Couple of items, Mayor and I had an opportunity to attend the latest Citizens Police Academy graduation at the Northwest Area Command the other night, and it was, it was a great group of volunteers who dedicated their time for several weeks up there, going through very similar training, as do our police officers, and we're building up that backbone of support the way we have with our volunteers in police service to assist our police officers, and, you know, we appreciate everyone, you know, participating in that, and would hope that many of you who have not gone to that class sign up for the next class when it's coming up. I think you'll really be surprised and see what it's like to actually be a police officer on the inside looking out. It gives you a whole different perspective. Couple of other things, our Armed Forces and Military Event will be being held again at Craig Ranch Regional Park on September 8th. This stemmed from going back to 2014, when Mayor Lee had asked myself and Laura Coleman to honor our veterans over here. We're a very veteran-friendly city, so we went ahead and formed a nonprofit, and we've been doing this every year. You know, by council resolution, we moved it from Armed Forces Day to the second weekend in September to also incorporate and honor our first responders from 9/11. So this is the only recognized military event here that the city and the Veterans Community Commission supports and endorses, and I could tell you, it's put on by all volunteers. All of our veterans participate, and this year's lineup for entertainment is gonna be very exciting. We have a couple of very exciting things that I won't share with you right now because I want to keep you in suspense. Also, speaking of suspense, we took it upon ourselves to not only put on a yearly tribute, a yearly thank you to all of our military first responders and their families, which is free to the public too, but we decided to go ahead and create something in perpetuity to these fine people. So we're in the process right now, with the help of some community partners like Martin Harris, who are designing a veteran slash first responder memorial that will be built in the north end of the park. If you had an opportunity to go back there when China Lights was there, you'll kind of see the area. It's, we think, not I, but we think, it's a very appropriate location by the lake, very serene, where people can just visit, reflect, sit down. It's gonna be really a one-of-a-kind, you know, tribute. We have some very, very expensive ones, we have some very nice-looking ones at Grand Sawyer, but if you wanted to visit that one, you'd have to go during the hours of Grand Sawyer because it's behind a fence. Ours is gonna be open to the public all the time, and you could bring your family there and just enjoy the surroundings, the very, very friendly park surroundings. Last but not least, and I'm gonna read from this so I make sure that I don't miss anything. You know, we have a very, very proactive council over here, and we have amazing, amazing employees. We have a couple of problems like all municipalities deal with. One of the things that we've been dealing with for years over here is the fireworks issue. I could tell you, I'll speak for myself as far as a councilman representing Ward IV, I get numerous complaints on fireworks. They're starting already. A lot of people don't realize, or some people don't care, how it affects their neighbors and the other people surrounding, living in the area. We have a very, as I mentioned a moment ago, we have an awful lot of veterans that live here, and very many of us are also animal lovers, and I could tell you from the perspective of not a veteran myself, but someone who knows veterans that have PTSD, this is a very, very scary event when it happens. When you have fireworks going off, not only during the Fourth of July time during the day, but coming up to it weeks before, and then in the middle of the night, two or three in the morning, it jostles these people, and it brings back some memories that shouldn't be allowed to be brought back, you know, doing something like that. So let me just read this, and I'll be very brief. We'll take the time from Jeff Alpert's time, okay? As the Fourth of July approaches, I want to let all our residents know that the city of North Las Vegas, in partnership with municipalities across southern Nevada, is launching a fireworks safety education and enforcement campaign to make people aware that there is zero tolerance for illegal fireworks in our valley. Law enforcement agencies across the valley will be cracking down on all fireworks that aren't safe and sane. Now, safe and sane fireworks include sparklers, snaps, pinwheels, smokeballs, fountain and snake, novelty fireworks that do not leave the ground. Illegal fireworks include firecrackers, rockets, and cakes, and anything that does leave the ground. Offenders will be subject to $1,000 fine, as well as hundreds of dollars in additional disposal fees. In addition, fireworks of any type are legal for use only from June 28th to July 4th, not before or after. Be on the right side of the law. If you see illegal fireworks during the week of the Fourth, please do not, and please, let me say this again, please do not call 911 or 311. It's important to keep those emergency lines open for their proper use. Instead, visit, and this is all one word, and this is coming out in the PSA, it'll be in our newsletters as well, visit ulightitwritit.Vegas. The website will have more information about it and how to report illegal fireworks as the Fourth of July holiday approaches. This is a community problem that can only be addressed by all of us working together. Please support our efforts and stay safe. Now, once again, we all love the fireworks, but there is a fatality, a connection to this that some of us don't see, but some of us on council do realize that. We get the reports of fires and everything during the holiday season. So please, let's all work together for the safety of our residents and each other, as well as our children. So please remember this, and let's help one another this coming Fourth of July. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good report. Councilwoman Goines Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week on the 30th, Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Black and I attended an active shooter training drill at Shadow Ridge High School, and we were there as participants, but the level of the participation made it seem absolutely real in my eyes, I don't know about my colleagues, but what was so intriguing to me were several things, to see all the different shades of uniforms, no matter what color, no matter from what jurisdiction you were from, working together in one accord to get the bad guys out of the school. Secondly, just seeing the multitude of people that were there, men and women, you know, that are our first responders, and how quickly they responded, they all had an assigned task, they knew what to do, it just went flawless. And thirdly, it seemed to us like we were out there for an eternity while the drill was going on, but all in actuality, I think they were in and got some of the bad guys out within the first 10 to 15 minutes, which if you're standing there watching it, it just seemed like you were out there for a half an hour to an hour, but it was really, really super quick. And I'd just like to say thank you, and I just have a different perspective on the job our first responders do to keep the community safe in our city, and then how they work together. You know, the training that they go through to get to this point must be massive. I can't imagine how much training they have to go through to put this off. And then lastly, the students that volunteered to be the victims, they were so real, it was almost scary. So I'm glad I did get to witness this, just to relax my mind a little bit, because I always say, it, sometimes it's not when it happens, and we can almost say if it happens or when it does happen, and I hope that never happens to any of our schools or any public buildings in our city. So thanks again for allowing us to participate.
Good report. Councilwoman Black.
Thank you, Mayor. We are so fortunate in North Las Vegas to have Craig Ranch Regional Park in our city limits. It's a tremendous asset to the community. One example is the event that my wife and daughter and I had the privilege of attending on May 26th, there was the Floating Lantern Festival. It was amazing to see more than 3,000 hand-decorated paper floating lanterns when the sun went down. It was a gorgeous evening on the grass and the trees, there was awesome food selections, and then when the sun went down, and there were more than 3,000 lanterns with handwritten messages of hope and peace and reflection floating on the ponds at Craig Ranch. It was very, it was very beautiful and an awesome event, and that just is an indicator of the type of events that we can host here in our city.
Good report. I heard 9,000 people were out there, and they had a full concert. It was a great event. Thank you very much. Moving on to public forum, this is the time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, but will be heard later separately. So if you want to speak on, this is, if you want to speak on any items listed under consent agenda, business ordinances, or appointments, now is the time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for posted agenda items?
No.
Okay, we don't. Anybody like to come forth on any of those posted agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum, and moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda of June 6, 2018 for possible action.
Mayor and council, the staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as is.
Thank you. Call for a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as published.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
The year...
Oh, sorry, it didn't click. Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 11. Staff's recommendation is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
You have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. We'll be on a set future public hearing dates.
Matters listed under set future public hearing dates will not be heard by the city council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on these items, attend the meeting where the public hearing will be heard and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 12, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the city planning commission meetings.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I so direct you to set any dates as necessary.
So noted, Mayor.
Moving on to business.
Item 13, received presentation by Grant Hannibal School Associate Superintendent regarding the quarterly report for the Clark County School District.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hannfeld.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Lee. It's a privilege and an honor to be here. Great event so far. I look when I get to come and see celebrations and honoring your excellent chief of police, and always appreciate it when Mr. Barron will recognize CCSD for something positive, as we like to hear that news. First thing I want to do is I want to recognize Mr. Jeff Alpert publicly and put it on the record for what he did and his vision for recognizing those five seniors. We did that a few weeks back, but I think it was, it was an excellent idea. It was a great honor for those kids to come here and be recognized publicly, and thank you, Mayor Lee, for chipping in a little extra. And Jeff and I have already been talking a little bit about how we could expand it perhaps next year, maybe even include some middle school kids and start really getting kids vested into not only the school district, but the community they live in, and some pride in their community. As you may have seen in the local news or on TV in the past few weeks, CCSD is recovering from yet another budget crisis. This has put a significant strain on all CCSD schools. For most elementary schools, the cost was to cut approximately one teaching unit. For most middle schools, it was approximately two to three teaching units, and for high schools, especially the larger high schools, it was as many as five to seven teaching units that were lost as a result of this latest round of cuts. The principals have worked diligently with their SOTS, their SOT, members to submit a revised budget, and those budgets were approved just a couple weeks back. I will say it is an honor to work with the principals that I serve in North Las Vegas. It's been mostly bad news when it comes to budget, but they persevere and do so with the most positive attitude. It is a testament to their character and their community pride. I wish I could say I'm hopeful about the budget as we move into the years to come, but unfortunately, until the funding formula from the state is revised, I'm afraid students and families in Clark County will continue to be asked to do more with less. On that note, the district is working towards compliance with AB 469, particularly in regards to the 85%, 15% part of the budget. By law, AB 469 says that 85% of the unrestricted funds needs to be allocated to each local school precinct. The district, in cooperation with the Nevada Department of Education, has a plan to be in compliance by the end of this month. Part of that compliance is required that the central office create service-level agreements for all central office functions that directly impact schools. These services include items such as assessment, athletics, summer school, transportation, grounds, maintenance, and many others. There's actually 28, excuse me, of these agreements currently being created. These agreements detail the costs, the district's costs for providing services, as well as a per-unit cost to each school. Starting in the school year 1920, schools will have the autonomy to continue to pay for the services from the district, or take the funds and find another way to provide the services. Of course, all of this is pending board approval. As most of you know, the superintendent search concluded a month ago, and the school board voted to appoint Dr. Jesus Jara as the next Clark County School District Superintendent. Dr. Jara has been a deputy superintendent of Orange County Public Schools in Florida for the last six years. His district has had an increase in grad rate to almost 94%. He created a chief minority achievement officer position to accelerate the learning opportunities for minority students. He has increased AP participation and performance in minority students, and helped develop and implement a parent academy, which is a training program specifically designed for parents to become education partners with the district. I have not had the opportunity to meet him yet. He starts officially on June 19th, so in just a couple weeks, but I certainly do look forward to working with him to make CCSD and the North Las Vegas schools better for all of our students and our families. Kind of a short update tonight, but that's all I got for you. I know Mayor Lee is excited because the Jefferson Yard has been moved over to the city of North Las Vegas, so we have that good news to celebrate as well on behalf of CCSD. So I'd be more than happy to take any questions or bring back any information you would request from Central.
Yeah, thank you. I know this is a presentation only, we won't be voting on this, but I think if some council have some questions, maybe, do you have a question? We'll start with Isaac, work our way down.
No, actually, Mayor, I'm very enthusiastic about my new big boss here. He comes, I think, at a very critical time for the school district. I know, speaking for myself, although I have a feeling that my colleagues here will agree with me, you can expect that this council will do everything in its power to help Superintendent Jara. I have a hard time saying that. He's gonna have to say "hara" I think when he gets here, but I mean, if he's a success, our children will have success, and that is very much in the vested interest of the city of North Las Vegas. I was thinking, maybe, Mayor, perhaps we could definitely invite him to our city council meeting, and maybe even host some sort of an introduction to the community, you know, invite our community members here from North Vegas to have a little, maybe, a little mini town hall right here, maybe in our city council chambers, or maybe on the ninth floor or something, right? I'd like to hear more about him, and I'm sure the community would like to know a lot more about him. He's Venezuelan. I'm sure he speaks Spanish, and I know many of my constituents would be very happy to get his thoughts on how he's gonna make our school district better.
Thank you. That was very nice. So what I just heard you say is you'd like to invite the superintendent over here as the first community comes to and get a great reception, a warm reception. Would you send that back?
I will. I already wrote it down.
That we would love to have him come here.
Would you like it to be one of these events, or something separate from?
Just come, maybe both, but for sure to come meet the council, and you know, and then we can maybe do a community event if he felt like, and Isaac could maybe support him on that, so. Councilman Churchill, did you have anything?
I'll be right back.
Ms. Goines?
Hi. Don't mean, I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, but with the new superintendent, so like with title funds, how much change can he, because those are federal funds, correct? How much change can he do other allocated areas for those funds? Do they have to remain like they are, is my question.
Well, there certainly is some flexibility in the use of title funds, because we get the lump sum, and then the title department allocates those funds based on needs of schools, but they are earmarked for certain schools that have met the qualifications for qualifying for those funds. But there certainly could be opportunities for reallocating maybe title funds and using general funds differently. I would hope that that would be, that would be something that the new superintendent would look at.
Councilman Black, nothing? Maybe you brought this up, maybe Assistant City Manager tonight, Gina, Ms. Gavin, could we get an update on the Jefferson transaction? What is actually going on with that? I know that we're moving forth with our stuff on our end, but what's going on at that end?
So the update that I have received is it is on their consent agenda for...
So the update that I have received is it is on their consent agenda for June 14, and then it will come to our board July 18.
Okay. Grant, does that seem like it's moving right along properly? Anything that we need to know about that?
That sounds, sounds good to me.
That is very good.
And just one point I wanted to make. I was really impressed with Dr. Jara in that he sent us an email about two, three weeks back now, and he asked each one of the school associate superintendents for 30 pieces of data on every one of our schools. And I know that the public is often critical of, well, how is somebody that really doesn't know CCSD going to come in and make a change if they don't know the district? And I think it's commendable to him in advance of coming into the school district that he actually asked 15 of us and for the 350 schools that we supervise, he wanted 30 very specific pieces of data, achievement, behavioral, academic, community, socioeconomic. He wanted very granular detail on every single one of our schools and to identify the schools that were high performing and why, the schools that were struggling and why, interventions that we have in place. It was impressive to me. A little overwhelming, but impressive. I was impressed that he was asking for all that information, and I know that was just from the school associates. And I know he's requested great detailed information from the chief academic officer, the chief instructional officer, the COO, the CFO. So there has been a lot of running around, collecting data, getting all of that data organized so that he can hit the ground running. So again, I was quite impressed at the level of detail he was requesting prior to even setting foot in Nevada.
One other item, and Councilman Barone brought this up. Now, during the spring, the air of summer break now, is there are schools that we need to do as a city to mark sidewalks, to fix lights, to work on things, put signage up. Dellen, would you come up for just a second? I think we're having a meeting that we're calling, was it Dellen that would know the most about this, with the principals in North Las Vegas to see what assets we can bring to help them better utilize our roads and stuff?
Absolutely, mayor. So this was a proposal from Councilman Barone and Councilwoman Goines-Brown, and some of the conversations that came out from their dealings with the school district. And they had the great idea that to bridge the community and the school community, that we should invite the principals. We were hoping to do it before summer, but we also understand you guys work hard and need a summer break too. So the tentative date, and you'll all be getting invited soon, is July 26. We're going to invite the principals from every elementary, middle, and high school in wards one and two. I have a feeling we'll probably do maybe awards three and four next, because I'm sure the other council members are interested in doing the same, along with the associate superintendent and any other school staff, school police. And we've invited our police chief, as well as our public works department, so we can get a sense of if there's any needs you guys have that we can help, either traffic or safety. We can express from our council sort of the expectations we in North Las Vegas have for academic achievement, and just really come together as one community to share best practices for the kids.
Thank you. Good. We're in business with you. We want you to succeed.
And, you know, one thing I'd love to see, school safety, of course, is paramount to everything we do. And I would love to see a partnership between North Las Vegas Police and CCSD Police. I know they currently have one, but I don't see, I don't see North Las Vegas Police in the hallways of my schools as I run around and visit. And I wish we had that type of a relationship where North Las Vegas Police, if they had some time in the communities, to just pull up and walk through the buildings. I think it'd be a great, a great way for the kids in the schools to get to know and trust North Las Vegas Police as well. I live in Moapa Valley, some of you may know, and we didn't have school police out there. We had just our local metropolitan police. But I saw great value in the fact that they made time, three, four times a week, where they would just come and roam the halls and sometimes go in and out of classrooms, and I would escort them through the building. And I just thought it was a great way to let the kids know that we're looking after them, that we all care, and it's not just CCSD Police's job to keep these schools safe. We know how well. I think Councilwoman Brown pointed out how great they work together when they prepare and when they, when they train for tragedies. But it would be great to have them, I think, in the schools, if we could get them in the schools, just to let the kids know they're there when, when there's not a problem as well.
Okay. Well, our acting police chief is in the back. Maybe Dellen could introduce you, and if there's a way to support you, we'd like to do that. Any other questions? Seeing that, great report. Thank you, and we would love to welcome the new superintendent, if you would like to come here.
Thank you for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. There'd be no motion as necessary, just accept the presentation.
Item 14, approve interlocal agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada for a two-year term for the Deer Springs District livable center study. Please note that the correct wards for this item is awards one and four, not three and four.
Thank you. Director Alfredo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A few meetings ago, we looked at a budget for staffing for the city of North Las Vegas, and I think when we give you that budget, we sort of say, you know, the investment in staff we want you to make. We've done everything else we could to make sure we bring all the resources to bear that we can for the city of North Las Vegas. And so this interlocal is an example of us going out and applying for existing grants in the valley to try to bring resources to the community. We actually have, I believe, yeah, one of the planners, Johanna Murphy, that helped coordinate this along with Gina and Public Works to help us land this grant in competition with the other municipalities in the valley. It's a $250,000 grant that's going to be used to bring in consulting services to plan out the Deer Springs corridor. And so we really want to make it a place in North Las Vegas, a place that's a livable community, that has walking paths and trails, that sets it up in the future for mass transit in the community, but also just to have a healthy community as well. And so actually, and because of the, because of all the activity in North Las Vegas, really, it is a time that we can plan together and develop this, this area that's on Deer Springs between Fifth and Pecos. And also with that, later in this meeting, we're going to have a presentation from Craig Rayburn from the RTC is the new planning director there. So I've never been more excited about an interlocal than, than this one here. So we'll have this here for your consideration.
Thank you. So we just need a motion to approve the interlocal with the RTC, is what I hear you saying. Okay, the chair will take a motion?
No, mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 15, authorize issuance of a purchase order to CDW government in the total amount of $74,568.42, using the competitive bidding exception per NRS 332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of 18 Toughbook laptops and 18 vehicle docking stations for the new patrol SUV vehicles for the police department.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions this hour? If not, the chair will take a motion. Move to approve. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 16, authorize issuance of purchase orders in the total amount $303,861, $218,834.75 to Ford Country, $76,473.86 to Wired Designs, and $7,700 for the miscellaneous items to be installed by fleet staff, using the competitive bidding exception per NRS 332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of six 2018 Ford Explorer police interceptors, one 2018 Ford F-150 pickup, and the associate outfits for the police department.
Can I ask you a quick question on this? Why are we, why did we use the exception on the competitive bidding, Darren? Do you have an answer for that? Or Mike?
Mayor, so I believe we have some sort of a deal with, with this particular dealer, and so we do get a competitive rate as it is, and also because these trucks are currently what's in our fleet. And so because we maintain them, it's, we can use that exception. It says if we have the same kind of equipment and it's easier for us to maintain them due to our familiarity, then it becomes an exception.
So we stay Ford because we're geared, I mean, Darren, do you have, can you add to that just a little bit?
Mayor, there's, as the city attorney has said, there's a number of reasons why we do it. There's a functional reason, there's a, you know, from a purchasing standpoint, and there's a financial reason. We have gone out and looked at several different fleet purchasing options and found that this one was the most competitive for us. This was something that was done probably within the last year. When we were looking at the pricing of the vehicles, we brought in Enterprise fleet, may remember that, those discussions, and priced that out. Again, it is as well, the packages that we put together to make sure they're consistent. You know, we don't have but different types and makes and models of cars in there, but particularly, this is a dealership that has given us a discounted, a deeply discounted rate for the bulk purchase of the fleet. But Mike, is there anything on that?
No, I think you covered it. Basically, we're getting, you know, compared to like an MSRP, we're saving significant money using this exemption. We've got a good relationship with Ford dealer here in town, local passenger vehicles. I mean, we're getting something in the neighborhood of a $7, $10,000 discount by going through this route.
Okay, so I assume that they're treating us very well, and we probably have a lot of parts in stock. We can fix Ford, get them in and out if that's the way we're moving. But I'm sorry, I should have asked that question. I just barely caught it right there. Gentlemen, I appreciate you coming up. And, City Attorney, I know you watch over this stuff quite well, so thank you very much. So the chair has no problem with this, so the chair will call for a motion to authorize a purchase?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 17, approve the Southern Nevada Smart Community Vision to maintain and improve transportation system infrastructure.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion. Move to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Ms. Goines-Brown, thank you. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 18, presentation by the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada regarding a study of high-capacity transit in Southern Nevada known as Onboard: Your Future Transit Plan.
Thank you. Welcome. We have a friend from the Regional Transportation Commission today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Craig Rayborn. I'm the director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization element at the Regional Transportation Commission, and I'm going to give a quick update on the onboard project, Your Future Transit Plan. So onboard initially started as an examination of high-capacity transit options and needs for the region. As soon as we started that, though, we heard pretty clearly from the community that we also needed to look at ways to improve existing and traditional transit services. And so that became an element of the plan as well. And then a third piece of this is to look at emerging transit technology and those impacts. We don't want to get through this huge effort and then have it become immediately outdated as soon as, as soon as new technologies start to, start to hit the transportation field. So I'm going to lay out kind of the overall structure of how the project will, will end. So this, this is a project of the Regional Transportation Commission, of which the mayor is a core member, a key member. The onboard project itself will make a recommendation guided by our Transportation Resource Advisory Committee and other bodies of the RTC, the Executive Advisory Committee. It will also receive a large amount of community input. I'll kind of run through what we've been doing with that so far. And, and then involvement from your planning departments and your public work department as well, to eventually make a, to make a recommendation around the end of this year to the RTC as to, as to which high-capacity transit corridors should be advanced. So the, the pieces of this very simple project, not very complex at all, are like we, like I said before, a high-capacity transit element, the emerging transit technologies, and the traditional transit piece. And I'm going to talk about the various elements of the high-capacity transit component to onboard tonight. So the, the first piece I'll talk about, yeah, okay, hold on, make sure I got this right. Okay. First piece I'm going to talk about is the high-capacity examination of overall high-capacity transit corridors. So the project started more than a year ago. We went out to the community. We went to the, the local agencies, and we went to our advisory boards to identify a universe of corridors. We did public input. We let people participate in a survey where they could suggest corridors. And then we looked at those corridors. We examined those against the, the data, you know, the demographics along those corridors, the current ridership, things like vehicle ownership, equity issues, and so on. We broke them into segments so that we could do this data analysis in a sort of a clean cohesive way. We screened them, evaluated them, and then we narrowed this big universe of corridors down to a smaller, a smaller set, and we took those into a next round of examination, which is where we're at right now. So when we went out and asked, you know, what corridor should we look at as a region for high-capacity transit, we basically heard every major corridor in the region should be looked at for high-capacity transit. So we ended up with an initial list of 50, 50 corridors, which is what you see right here. But that's too many to make an effective, an effective plan. And so we, we conducted the screening where we broke them into these segments you can see here, and then we applied this set of roughly 30, a few more than 30 criteria against these corridors to identify, you know, their, their promise for high-capacity transit success. And so you can sort of see how the color coding, how the color coding worked out. The darker green are the corridors that are most promising. They have the most ridership. They represent denser, dense population areas of higher need and higher traditional transit ridership. So we used this analysis to get us into what we're calling the Phase Two corridors, where we're down to about 25 corridors now. And so these are the, these are the ones that are remaining. And what we're doing with these is a similar type of analysis, but because we've narrowed, we've narrowed the full list down, we're actually able to do some modeling of future ridership numbers to start evaluating how successful they would be on a performance basis. So how well they, you know, they would do in, in ridership compared to what it would take to operate different, different types of transit along these corridors. Another, oh, so let me just go back to this one. So that's where we're at right now. That process, we're going to whittle that down more. 25 is still too many to be an effective first, first plan. For example, you know, we've, we've looked at what our sort of our peer communities have done, and so, you know, Denver, Salt Lake City, Phoenix, San Diego, Orlando, and their regions, and they ended, they all ended up with first initial plans along the lines of what we're doing with maybe four to eight to 10 corridors. And that's roughly what we're going to, what we're going to aim for. It's probably 10-ish. There's no magic number. It sort of depends on, on kind of where the process takes us at this point. But that's where we're, that's where we're going next. So whittle this, whittle this map down. Another, another important element that we're looking at is, you know, what kind of development can happen along these corridors once they, once they get identified? And then how can that development help the success of the system itself? It's a, it's a reinforcing loop that, that happens with, with transit. And so we've worked with planning and the public works departments, with our technical advisory group, with other stakeholders to identify this set of nine TOD typologies. And you can kind of see, you know, that some are specific to parts of the region, like the Las Vegas Strip, some are more generic in nature. But they basically cover all the types of development that typically happen along high-capacity transit corridors, specifically around stations. For each one of those nine, we've developed a sort of summary of what the typology looks like, and so you can kind of see the pieces that we look at. We sort of present, you know, visually what, what the, the cross-section would, would be. So we cover things like what the street pattern around these corridors or these TOD typologies would look like, what the population density would be, what types of land uses are typical for them. But we've, we've done that in such a way that it's flexible enough so that when the corridor actually, when, when these corridors actually start to develop, they can be adapted to the, the needs and interests of each one of the local communities. We also are interested in like, when are the time periods when these things work? Because these corridors or these TODs actually feed back into the success of how the transit agency element of the RTC would be able to operate the, the system once it's, once it's in place. So we did a similar exercise with TOD locations. We, after we had narrowed the, the number of corridors down to 25, we met with the planning, the public works departments, our stakeholders, the technical advisory group, to have everyone identify any location along those corridors that might be suitable for a TOD in the future. And we're in the process right now of conducting a similar type of analysis. What kind of density changes would possibly happen if... What kind of density changes would possibly happen if certain types of TOD corridors or TOD locations were placed along those different corridors? What would they do to ridership numbers along the system and so on? So we get a chance to evaluate that. So the next step is going to be to further narrow this piece down as well. And so what we'll end up with at the end of the process is a set of recommendations of routes and probable locations for TODs. It's based on input from the community and the stakeholders in general. So the process that we've gone through right now has involved a tremendous amount of outreach with the community. It's more than the RTC has done on any project in the past. Let's see if I can get this to, there we go. So we conducted an online survey where we've received more than fifteen thousand results. We've attended more than, almost ninety events, we've had sixty speaking engagements. In fact, our most recent one, or one of the two most recent ones, was at Alliantet, North Las Vegas. I think the mayor pro tem was there. That was one of Raymond's last presentations for those who know him. We've conducted fourteen technical advisory group meetings, four track meetings, the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee that advises our board. And then we've had four public meetings where we've invited the general public to come speak. We do presentations and talk about everything that the project hopes to accomplish and ask for as much input as we can get. So the steps that we followed so far, the next steps, you know, we started in spring of 2017 defining the purpose and needs. We've developed those alternatives for the corridors that I've identified. We're evaluating those to whittle that down, and we're aiming to have recommendations to our board for a final plan late fall, probably November, December timeframe. Another piece of the onboard project in the high-capacity transit examination is our resort corridor feasibility study. We're looking at the resort corridor because, you know, the Strip is perhaps the most important street in the state, certainly for the region. And so the same types of criteria that we use to evaluate the region as a whole don't really apply to the Strip. And so it sort of needs a separate kind of a study, looking at things a little bit differently. But we're going to look at, you know, how to do access to, from, and within the resort corridor area, the area within the yellow outlines on the map, specifically looking at three critical links, you know, airport to the Strip, movement within the Strip, and then from the Strip to downtown. We've learned that, you know, that all of these are important, you know, more than fifty percent of visitors to the region, regardless of where they're staying, will go to the downtown part. And so it is making sure that whatever we look at covers that is pretty important. So some of the key inputs for the resort corridor study, we're in a unique time, there's a lot more, I'll say, real-time data that's available, that's letting us get a really, really good understanding of how movement actually happens within the Strip. So, you know, there's GPS-enabled vehicles, people have smartphones, you know, these data can be purchased. And so we can actually see how people move within the Strip, and we're able to acquire and use that data to better understand, you know, what we would want to accomplish along the resort corridor. We conducted a stated preference survey where we set up at, I think it was twelve locations throughout the resort corridor, so at the airport, various resort properties, downtown Fremont Street, the convention center. And we asked people to choose modes for different types of trips. And so they could choose between, you know, taxi, Uber, Lyft, bus, or light rail. And so we would give them, you know, how long it would take to go from where they were to a particular destination, how much it would cost them, and let them make choices. So that's really valuable information because it tells you, you know, it forces people sort of into a decision that's better than just saying, do you like bus? Do you like taxi? Do you like light rail? It actually gets them to make a decision. So that's very valuable. Lets us get a good understanding for how much they value the different modes and the different alternatives. We're looking at emerging trends and development patterns. So like I mentioned, the overall onboard study, one of the things that we're going to look at is the impact of emerging technologies. That also works its way into looking at the resort corridor specifically. We're also looking at sort of the impact of new developments. There's a lot still going on on the resort corridor, new hotels being proposed, the convention center being finished, and a football stadium. And all of those will have potentially, you know, significant transportation impacts for that area. And so those are sort of those key mobility concerns, is sort of how those things all translate into issues that high-capacity transit can address. Another big input that we're looking at is, you know, the stakeholder priorities. So we're talking to the property owners, we're talking to the convention authority to understand what their interpretations of visitor interests are. We're talking with the unions to understand their interests as well. And so we're hoping to get as good a picture as possible for, you know, what the needs are and the priorities and interests are along the resort corridor. So the project is on a similar timeline. I'm not going to go through all of this. If you have questions, I'm happy to talk about it more, but, you know, here we are, it's actually, the timeline's off, but we're early June. But we're on track to finish this on roughly the same time as, roughly the same timeline as the valley-wide examination of high-capacity corridors as well. The next piece I'm going to talk about, the third element to the high-capacity transit plan, is our study of Maryland Parkway. One thing to say about Maryland Parkway that's important to point out is that Maryland Parkway was actually recommended for high-capacity transit in the last major regional high-capacity transit plan that we did about fifteen years ago. And so that's the, it's the last recommendation of that plan. It's part of what we're looking at this time around, but it's, again, it's kind of outside of the sequence that the rest of the corridors are being looked at, just because it's the conclusion of prior work that we've done. But Maryland Parkway is important because it serves, overall, it connects to two dozen of the transit system, of routes in our existing transit system. It's almost like the backbone of moving people for our transit system. It's our second high-productivity route outside of the Strip. I mean, it's the, outside of the Strip, it's the most productive route. And when I say productive, I'm talking about like efficiency, fare recapture rate, boardings per hour, some of those types of measures. So it's an important route for our system's performance. It links a number of key destinations. It serves almost eighty-six thousand jobs along that corridor, within a half-mile of that corridor, and about ninety-three thousand residents. And I do want to just point out, and I'll show the map in a second, yeah, I'll go ahead and show the proposed route map in a second, but I do want to point out that although, you know, this doesn't reach North Las Vegas, it connects almost every North Las Vegas fixed route bus line that runs through, that runs north-south and through North Las Vegas connects to Maryland Parkway. I think there's one exception. And so this is an important route for the folks in North Las Vegas as well. And there are fifteen thousand boardings in North Las Vegas daily on our transit system, so it's important to the community. And so what we do on Maryland Parkway will have benefits throughout the entire region, not just for the half-mile area that's immediately adjacent to it. The route as it stands right now, what we're looking at is an eight-point-seven mile route that runs from the airport to downtown and then to the University Medical Center. We're looking at a number of different technology options, you know, and I'll explain those in just a second as well. And the route would have a total of about twenty-five station locations, assuming about a third of a mile between stations, and that varies depending on the technology that ends up getting chosen. But like I alluded to earlier, the number of jobs that are along the corridor that we're looking at are pretty important. It's a pretty significant number of jobs. You can kind of see the numbers. Also, the thirty thousand students at UNLV that could potentially use the system as well, and then sixteen thousand daily trips by employees to and from the airport. So what we're looking at right now ranges from, you know, we're a planner, so we look at no action all the way through to fairly extensive changes. So the current system right now is Route 109, regular fixed route bus system. One of the options would be to enhance the existing route, you know, to sort of clean it up a little bit, maybe get some traffic signal prioritization at some of the key intersections to allow better movement, make the stops a little more welcoming, a little more inviting, and probably, you know, limit the number of stops just to make the system work a little bit better. It's what we call enhanced bus service. Sorry, that was not a subliminal message where light rail popped up for just a second. That's just a leftover from the slide, the way the slide deck is prepared. But one of the things we're looking at too, one of the technologies we're looking at is Bus Rapid Transit. It's a dedicated curb lane, rubber on asphalt still, but the bus would have prioritization through that and priority through that. It's essentially what we have on a number of routes around the region right now, but with slightly different bus technology itself and different station design and so on. Another element to this that we'd like to point out is that this would also probably involve alternative modes like sidewalk and bike improvements as well. And so you can see there's a bike lane that is elevated, so it's separated out of the road, which tends to, you know, the data show that's a safer way and makes it more comfortable for people to ride their bikes as well. So it carries some advantages that way, too. The alignment would change a little bit from three lanes in each direction, six lanes total, to two lanes in each direction, but then it would have that dedicated outside lane. It's there for transit, but vehicles can still use it for the right turns and access to driveways. Then the next alternative we're looking at is light rail of some type. So it could be streetcar, it could be urban light rail, there are different vehicle configurations that make that up. But basically, it's taking the same basic profile that we saw for Bus Rapid Transit and putting it in as a rail system instead. So that outside lane remains available for vehicles to use for right turns into, you know, driveway access points and at intersections. And so there's, you know, the same minimal amount of traffic impact. So the next steps, we're waiting on some final guidance from the Federal Transit Administration, and then we'll move into the last stages of an EPA process, which would involve a thirty-day public comment period where we want to hear, we generally want to hear, from the public as to which of these technologies, which alternative is the best way to proceed. We'll get input from the local jurisdictions, we'll get input from the RTC's advisory committees, including track again, and then we'll take a recommendation based on all of that input to the board for their action. We're hopeful that we can maybe get there by the end of the summer. It really depends on some final resolution of some issues with the EPA process.
Thank you.
And that's my presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
A lot of thought.
But I will just point out, I've been in the job for three days. I've been at the RTC for three and a half years, but this particular job, three days, so.
You know, a lot of thought has went into this. Our city Johannes worked very hard with this. Gina's group has worked hard with this. Tina especially is changing the vision of this area. I would just like to see it go from this to actual something, and I think we're all ready for it now. So, do we have any comments or questions on anything here, then, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you very much for coming, and welcome to North Las Vegas City Hall. You know, Mayor, I have to commend our friends who sat on the council here a few years ago and approved the North Fifth Corridor. Of course, I'm sure that you're coming up to speed and you're coming aware, that was actually built with light rail in mind as part of the thing. Of course, you know, with the implosion of the, unfortunately, you know, a decade ago with the implosion of our economy, of course, you know, we've been very slow, although it's coming in. And I'm kind of like, I'm very happy to see, you know, this transit corridor along Maryland Parkway. I'm kind of dismayed that it doesn't really have, you know, easy, ready-made connectivity to what we had for North Las Vegas. Again, you know, it's a river of cars in the morning. I know, because I'm part of that river of cars along I-15 coming in. Anything to alleviate that monster, that snake, that, and of course, you know, there was a river of cars heading back into North Las Vegas, you know, in the evening here. We already have that Fifth Street Transit Corridor in the works, it's like ready-made to go in here. Part of it really isn't RT's fault, you know, RTC's fault. It's when Las Vegas was platted out, you know, it's kind of like made with the railroad there along that axis. Really didn't lend itself to the rest of the plating of the valley. But there's got to be some way, wish, you know, a spur could connect up with that, you know, without having to go through downtown. The biggest problem that we have right now with Project NEON, you can go ahead and make that circuit into ten lanes going either way. All you need, that doesn't make a difference how many lanes you've got, you know. All you need is one accident going either way, and boom, you're stuck. Give you twelve lanes, you know, you'll have the accident covering about half of them. Unfortunately, because, you know, we didn't secure the Beltway right away around, that, no, they couldn't figure that out. But it's, again, if you have one transit corridor that everyone feeds into going to the downtown, we're still recreating the same issue again, you know, and falling into that, into that, falling into that trap, you know, of having like one central location. I think a decentralized one, just my opinion, is way better, you know. Again, connectivity, yes, but decentralized, you know, we have to get away from going to the center of town. That's what's causing all the problems now. But I'm sure there's lots better minds than mine that are working on this. And that's not to beat up on you, and again, you know, and with our, I'm just happy to see that we're moving forward here, finally, you know, after so many years. It is a breath of fresh air, and I echo the mayor's sentiments there, you know, just, it'll be good to see it go on, go on, and I commend you for your presentation.
Thank you. If I may, the, one of the things that we're certainly looking, are looking at is, you know, the, all those previous transit plans that we as the RTC did, as well as everything that all the local agencies have done over the past couple decades, are all being worked into what we're looking at. And so, you know, we're, like I said, we're looking at Maryland Parkway at this point because it's farther along in the process, it's just more evolved, but that doesn't preclude any of those, any of those remaining corridors and/or different alignments that are elements of those different corridors, making it into the final plan. But it's not an entirely data-driven plan. The efforts and the interests of the communities certainly will influence that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to go back for a second. Well, first, I want to, you know, echo what Councilmember Ron mentioned, how important it is. I don't get called on a daily basis from my constituents, you know, as far as, you know, where is this route? Why don't we have a bus over here? I'm dropped off on Anne Road and I have to walk a mile and a half late at night, excuse me, to get home. So I think we're all aware of that. But I did want to, you know, personally thank the RTC for the presentation that you made at Sun City. It was very informative, and I could tell you from the perspective of the residents there, it was very much appreciated. Now, I don't think any question is a foolish question, but this one may come close. I don't very often, if at all, ride the bus over here. I did when I was back east, and that's probably why I don't ride it over here. But, you know, do we have buses that are, lack of a better term, express buses, where you can catch a bus at this location and it's marked downtown, no stop in between, like the subways used to have, where you have a local subway and you have an express so people can get to point A and point B without stopping every other block? Do we have something like that here?
In the region, we do. I'll be honest, I'm not sure whether one serves North Las Vegas or not. I do know that there is what we call frequent service, which is not quite the same, but the buses arrive at least every fifteen-minute intervals along North Las Vegas, along Las Vegas Boulevard in North Las Vegas, and then I think there's one, maybe Rancho, please don't hold me to that, I'm still learning. I can actually pull out a map and we can...
Yeah, well, that would be the arrival times.
Right, that's the headway, the headway times. And then there are a number across the region, we do see the benefit of what you're referring to as express routes, and we do operate a few of those. You know, we have one that, you know, for Boulder City, we have one from Centennial Hills, West Cliff. So there are a few of those as well that sort of pick up in a limited number of areas, almost like park-and-ride type, and then they just run straight to the downtown destination and make connections. And make connections from there.
Thank you.
Ms. Goines-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to echo the same comments, especially with the routes, because I do hear a lot from my constituents about diminished routes from areas, especially in the Martin Luther King, Cary, Simmons Corridor. And I don't know if those are heavily traveled as they used to be. And also, the latest survey that was sent to the jurisdictions, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that one?
Actually, there was supposed to be a slide about that.
Because the link's...
It's fixed.
Okay, thank you.
It is fixed.
I want to do that.
We had that fixed within about half an hour of the email going out.
I just didn't check it again that day. All right, thank you. I'll check it now.
I didn't speak to them because the slides weren't in there, but that does give me an opening, if I may, to just highlight a couple of other things that we're doing specifically to North Las Vegas that I'm kind of proud of, since they're part of what I used to do before I became the director. But the Deer Springs, the Deer Springs Project, the Livable Centers Project, that's something that our department's doing. It's one of the more innovative studies, we think, that the RTC has been involved with in the region ever. And so that's one of the more promising efforts that we're doing. It's a pilot, from our perspective, where one of the things that we're really trying to do with that study, with another one, the North Las Vegas Master Bike Plan that we're funding, that is being, is we're trying to put these studies out and let the local agencies, our local partners, own the study. So we kind of just play the role of banking, paying the bills, providing input and guidance whenever we're asked to. But we're hoping that by having the studies done by the local agencies, that your staff and the council will own the results that come out of it, rather than having it be something that an RTC staff member has come and said, oh, this is how you should do it. So that, that's an example of one of those types of studies that we're...
And I might add that the last five miles of the 215 is now under some sort of, I think, final design and ready for construction, you know, so that's good. Director Dapin, could you bring me an update on what's going on with North Fifth later on? I don't want to pick him apart on that one, but I'm sometimes wondering if that's just getting left aside or there's some work that's actually happening on that North Fifth Corridor. So, other than that, do we have any other questions? You did great. Go back and tell Tina we're on the team, okay? North Las Vegas wants to support you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Thank you for the presentation. Moving on.
Item 19, approve First Amendment to the Generator Rental Agreement with W.W. Williams Company, which will increase the amount of the original agreement from an amount not to exceed $50,000 to an amount not to exceed $170,000, and extend the term of the agreement to December 31, 2018, for the rental of a 500-kilowatt generator for the Playa Wells site.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances. Introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items, and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 20, introduce ordinance number 2884, amending section 010, chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately 4.029 plus or minus acres therein from an R4 high-density residential district to a C1 neighborhood commercial district. ZN 1018, North Fifth and Rome Commercial Lot, for property generally located at the northwest corner of North Fifth Street and Rome Boulevard, and providing further matters properly related thereto. Item 21, introduce ordinance number 2885, amending section 010, chapter 16 of Title 17 of the Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately 10.64 plus or minus acres therein from an M1 business park industrial district to an RCL single-family compact lot residential district. ZN 1118, Centennial and Stats, for property generally located at the southeast corner of Centennial Parkway and Stat Street, and providing further managed property related thereto.
Thank you. Moving on to appointments.
Item 22, appointment by Mayor Pro Tempore Churchill of a citizen member to the Library District Board of Trustees to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2019.
Councilwoman Churchill.
Put that on. Just a little background. When it comes to appointments, you know, as council members, we all get willingness to serve forms from constituents within our specific wards to consider for appointments to different boards during our tenure on council. Every once in a while, you know, at least I do, if I feel that someone is qualified in a position that is outside my ward, it's about qualifications to what that person could bring to the city and that board. In this particular case, for the library trustee position, I know that Director Lewis was looking for someone who had a background in business and someone who really had the passion to want to be part of the library as a trustee of the library board. Stop touching this microphone. Apologize. As far as a qualified person who's business-oriented, Jane Armstrong, who I know very well, she's a businesswoman, she is a realtor, she's been involved from day one with our military events that we put on yearly over here, a memorial that is going forward, and she's a great proponent of North Las Vegas. And I don't think between Forrest and myself, that with the assistance of Mayor Lee here, we couldn't have picked a better person here to fill that position on the library board. So with that, it would give me great pleasure to appoint Ms. Jane Armstrong to that position as library trustee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Churchill. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Item is approved.
Item 23, appoint an at-large citizen member to the Veterans Community Commission to fill an unexpired term, ending June 30, 2021.
Councilwoman Churchill.
Yes, again, Mayor. Serving on the VCC myself for about a year before I got on council, it's very important to all of us that we take that commission and make it go forward. Thanks to our chairperson, our chairwoman, who's been serving there since I got off, the VCC is moving forward. But trying to keep the participation within North Las Vegas, because we do have very, very many qualified veterans that want to get involved, and very, very many veterans that need help here. We do have one right now that stands out, that's been wanting to get on that commission for quite a while. So with that, and I think we all agree, speaking with the mayor and all, that Mr. Mike Kelly would be the one that we would be most comfortable with appointing to the Veterans Commission. So with that, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Mike Kelly.
Great. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Ooh, a little fast. Items approved.
Item 24, appoint Mayor Pro Tempore for a one-year term, effective July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Councilwoman Churchill.
Well, a three-for over here. About a year go by so fast. This is what, the sixth? Okay, I still got a few more days, right? It seemed like almost yesterday, when I had the privilege of being appointed by the mayor to be Mayor Pro Tem. And I go back, because very many titles are titles. I take things as far as the opportunity to serve, as we all do on council over here. But I do remember an article written in the paper, and it didn't apply to me, but I think it somehow applies to some of the positions that we hold. And it was written that the mayor pro tem position is mostly ceremonial. Well, I could tell you that nothing on city council is ceremonial. You know, these are all very important positions. If the mayor's unavailable for a particular reason, we all try to fill in. There's papers to be signed. So it's not just holding a meeting and then seeing that person for another two weeks. So for me, it was a, it was a pleasure and a privilege. But now we pass the baton on to another very qualified council member here. And I could tell you that, you know, it gives me an awful lot of pleasure and privilege. You know, we're part of a family over here. We really, really are. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Pamela Goines-Brown as our next Mayor Pro Tem, or I like to call her Mayor Pro Temtris for the coming year, effective 12:01 a.m., July.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item, or do we want to make that, follow that motion? If we want to follow that motion? Please cast your vote. Item is approved. Congratulations. Very good. Moving on, Acting City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we've got Jeff Albert, our honorary historian, and he is going to talk about the city's fifth mayor, Dorothy, the honorable Dorothy Parker.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Albert.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Albert, local historian. In past presentations, I have covered the first four mayors of North Las Vegas, and tonight, we're going to hear about the fifth mayor. Her name is Dorothy Porter, but a lot of people may make the same mistake that Gina just made and say Dorothy Parker. It's even been in print, I've seen it in print, many times where they got her name wrong. It's just a very common mistake. So Mayor number five was a very interesting personality, and I'm going to separate my presentation into three parts, so I can do it thoroughly. She was a very colorful mayor, probably our most interesting one of the early mayors. So tonight, I'm going to cover her early life before she became mayor. And in part two, I'll cover her years in politics. And then part three, in August, I'll come back and talk about her years after leaving the mayorship. So if I can get the overhead on, we'll get some photos up along the way. I spent a lot of time over the last six, seven days doing research, writing, reading, and compiling a three-part presentation. So here we go. The first four mayors of North Las Vegas had occupations of tavern owner, car salesman, railroad engineer, and auto repair shop owner. They were all men. Dorothy Porter, our fifth mayor, had a steep mountain to climb as the first female politician of North Las Vegas, as well as being the first woman in Nevada to run a city. So who was Dorothy Porter? She was born Dorothy Howell on August 9, 1906, in Ben Avon, Pennsylvania. She was already dancing by age three. When she was 15, her mother took her to New York to audition for the new Ziegfeld Follies. They were unable to get in to see Flo Ziegfeld. I know, I'll get to it. She was unable to get in to see Flo Ziegfeld, as there was a large crowd, but by chance, in her ride down the elevator with her mother, Mr. Ziegfeld was in the elevator. He was so impressed meeting young Dorothy, that by the time the elevator reached the lobby, he had already offered her a job in show business. Our future mayor thus became a charter member of the Ziegfeld Follies Girls. She performed on many stages, and later in life commented on how elaborate and heavy her costumes were. So you can see a picture here of what she looked like at around age 15, when she started her career in dancing. From 1922 to 1927, Dorothy appeared in six movies and landed numerous modeling jobs. She gained national attention when she was chosen as "The Girl Whose Skin You Love to Touch" by Pall Malof Soaps. She appeared in magazine ads, as well as on billboards and postcards, which are now collector items. Here's another photo, if we could really zoom in, her, same kind of picture from the 20s is on the left. This is her when she was more, a little bit older in show business, and what she looked like when she was getting into politics. And if you can get a, because it's not the best picture, but this is one of the roadside billboards that showed her as the Pall Malof girl. She got a lot of attention for that. Dorothy danced her way through the 20s. With the stock market crash of 1929, theatrical productions on Broadway began to close. Flo Ziegfeld died in 1931, and by 1932, at the young age of 26, Dorothy may possibly have been considered an over-the-hill dancer. She went into acting and appeared on stages with the likes of Will Rogers, Eddie Cantor, George Jessel, and Al Jolson. She signed a contract with RKO Studios and left for Hollywood, where she made brief appearances in several films. Her most notable credit was performing in the movie Alexander's Ragtime Band with Tyrone Power. During filming of a movie in the late 30s, Dorothy suffered a nervous breakdown. She made the decision to leave show business and returned to New York City in 1939. In 1940, she went to work for Brink's as a payroll clerk, and in her free time, earned a real estate broker's license. Dorothy returned to her home state of Pennsylvania in 1944 and married a local businessman by the name of Upsher Truitt. This was to be the first of many marriages during her lifetime. Just 16 months later, Truitt passed away. Dorothy remained in the city of Dormont, Pennsylvania, and in 1949, married her second husband, Pittsburgh businessman James Greco. Soon thereafter, the couple packed up and relocated to North Las Vegas. In 1950, the couple bought the Airway Auto Court in North Las Vegas. 1950 was also the year that the Nellis Air Force Base opened. Las Vegas was also the site of the Kiefaufer Senate Hearings, which probed gambling interests and political corruption. Las Vegas's 45-year-old red light district was shut down, and brothel owners fled for safety to nearby North Las Vegas. They put pressure on Dorothy and Jim to sell their auto court, as it was so close to Nellis, where potential serviceman clients were stationed. Overwhelmed by continuing stress, James suffered a heart attack and died. Dorothy never did sell her auto court. Instead, she decided to fight back and clean things up. So in 1953, after marrying her third husband, John Porter, a local attorney, she made the move to enter politics and ran for city council. Next month, I'll be discussing her reign as a councilwoman and as the mayor of North Las Vegas. And this is finally a picture of what she looked like when she entered politics. Thank you.
That's interesting, because I suffered my nervous breakdown after I became mayor. She did hers before.
But you weren't in show business.
Yeah. Thank you. Moving on to the City Manager's report.
I'm not next. I gave her a blue card.
I know. This is City Manager's report. That's after this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
My mistake.
Mayor and Council, we don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. You've done a fine job this evening. Thank you, Ms. Acting Mayor, or City Manager. Now, Gary, moving on to public forum. Now is the time for the public to speak on issues not on portioned agenda items. Please remember, the council can listen to this, but if we raise any items we want to put on the calendar later, we can do that. But we won't respond to a lot of this.
Okay, last Monday was...
Wait, wait, let me ask you a question.
Well, I'm sorry, what?
I heard you were retiring.
Yeah, I'll get to that at the next city council meeting.
But we were going to get you a plaque.
Yeah, we'll work on that. Last Monday was Memorial Day, and I couldn't help but think at how much Memorial Day has changed in my lifetime, because when I was growing up in Iowa during the 50s and 60s, everybody had the day off. It's not that way today. And my dad insisted on visiting the gravesite of every war veteran in Sioux City, Iowa. And I'm sure he would like to have visited the gravesite of his brother, but his brother was one of the more than 7,700 people that didn't come back from World War II because they were missing in action. Later that night, I watched a PBS presentation about hallowed ground, and they did stories about many of the young men who died in our wars. And it struck me so sad that most of these young men were under 22. And it got me thinking about the cost of war. And I think we've gotten too far away from how heavy the cost of war is. And I'm not talking about dollars and cents. I'd like to run over this a little bit. World War I was costly war in the history of wars fought abroad. We actually lost 80 million people. That was more than the 71 million people we lost in World War II. And why was that? Well, number one, we weren't good at bombing back then, and we killed a lot of innocent people, a lot of collateral damage. The other thing, we were not using it, but the enemy was using cyanide gas. So we lost... So, we lost 80 million people in World War I. Moving along to World War II, less than 20 years later, because World War I ended in November 1918, so that in November, World War I will be 100 years old. This, of course, why do we not have this on the overhead?
You have to ask for it.
Brought these pictures in for a reason. Can we get the picture up there? This, of course, is, is Pearl Harbor. Uh, there's been a lot of controversy about why we had all our ships lined up, why we had all our, uh, airplanes so vulnerable, and it, there's been a lot of controversy through the years, that people have actually accused us of wanting to get into the war, but the truth of the matter was, the aviation of that era wouldn't allow Japan to fly, bomb Pearl Harbor, and get home. They did it anyway. Uh, and that's what got us involved, that's the day of infamy that every, every high school kid knows about. And Isaac, if any of these facts are wrong, please feel free to correct me, because I don't have a degree in history. So, let's look at World War II, cause I see we're running out of time. We lost 71 million people, and that includes civilians. Uh, 7.5 thousand people are still missing in action, 6.5 million Jews died in the Holocaust, 80 million Russian troops were killed. World War I was supposed to be the war to end all wars, and it wasn't. So, World War II was definitely the one that should've ended everything, because we invented the atomic bomb, which should have made war so bad that nobody would ever wanna fight war again, but less than five years later, uh, in 1950, it brings us to, uh, the Korean War, which we entered in June 25th, 1950, and we have never signed a treaty. But, uh, the fighting stopped in July 1953. 77,400, unaccounted for, over 1 million deaths in that war. Now, it brings us to Vietnam War, which started November 1st, 1955. The US joined the fighting in March 8th, 1965. War ended in April 30th, 1975. 51,000 Americans dead, 2,500 still missing in action, over 3 million people died. I realize I've already gone past my time, so I won't go into the Gulf War, or the war that we're still fighting. I think I've already made my point. The cost of war is too high. And there may be people that might take offense to that. But, I believe, and these are not my words, they're, they're the words of, of a great journalist, Annie Rooney, who was on 60 Minutes for many, many years. He once said, "That Memorial Day should not be a day in the calendar. It's something we should think about every day of our life." And he said, "All these young men and women," cause there were women that volunteered in World War I, American women died in World War I and World War II, and all the other wars since, so we've lost a lot of men and women. All these people, if they were, if they could communicate with us today, would have one question. How long does this have to go on? Arlington is almost filled up. Within one year, we'll be no place to bury the dead. Maybe it's time we need to reconfigure a few things. Thanks for your time.
No, good point. The cause of war is always the issue, and, um, it's, there were bad times, and we have to be careful today, so I appreciate you so much. Counsel. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up and address the council right now? Seeing none, this meeting, we, no one come forth, we'll close the public comment, and this meeting is adjourned.